How about this, how about if, once we use the property for its intended purpose, that we do a study if it's still needed or necessary?
I think what Brian said for me was.
We're just even scheduling that. Obviously, what we need to have if I'm going was, is something that's been accomplished. It would be, once we did the initial analysis done, then it would be finally done. So that's why I was asking, is this something you want us to look at in this fiscal year?
It's not that it's a five-year, to me, if it's not in a five-year, that's all.
Okay. So we put it in the.
And take care of the memory should we get out? Okay. Everybody agree? Well, master stormwater for the historic downtown, natural building system, right? Natural building systems?
Yes, sir. I think so.
Okay. We do? That's great. Sure. I saw a master water plant updated, and that was under the couch. Now, I was trying to remember.
I would go, actually, I would go with economic vitality and development, quite honestly. I mean, the original purpose of the stormwater farm was to accommodate the red line. But we saw it as something, we saw it as a way for us to develop our downtown. And so maybe what we can do, we can include it in mobility and transportation along with the road widening project, but then also put it into economic development by economic vitality and development, put it in both places to show the significance of that work.
Council supports that issue? Because I just agree with Mr. Scott, that while we're like with the same with the project, we're just while we're doing it, and we're just developing, correcting it front. If we can accomplish massive stormwater downtown and then charge credits for pumping in, so much for that. There you go. So much for that.
That is something that, once they do this build, that is something we do want to bring to you, is they want local property owners around to purchase capacity in there, so we can sub-credits to them, so that then they can buy the onsite stormwater, now the maximums to develop in downtown area. So much love over there with the old park.
All right, so that's on natural built systems. So anybody have anything else on natural built? Okay, I know we bounced around a little bit, how about anything further on mobility and transportation? Mr. Scott wants you to go over your weapon, that compasses, so we kind of get everybody thinking of the same page.
Mobility and transportation, basically, it's looking at how we move people, cars, goods through the city, and looking at all aspects of how we move people, cars, and goods through the city. It's really, it's creating our transportation system, not only looking at from an economic development perspective, but also from environmental protection, health and safety, and looking at all aspects of transportation in the city.
Expansion, yeah, expansion of links, and I hate to use those words, because I looked at somebody else's words that you don't make.
Lose the bus.
Yeah, but we're doing our own, East Orlando one or some other way, but getting a real system that people can get around the town, get to, you know, live in their car, even Y and Y and Y and Y, but you live in other cars, and they're really going by the Siemens. So if there was ways to go down to UCF Siemens from around, you know, you may get people taking those systems once or twice a week, even which are reducing needs, but there's virtually no public transportation within the city. East of Montbello Boulevard, I mean, that's, we have nothing on there, so expanding the service of public transportation, but really developing public transportation. And that includes long, long-term, some connection to somewhere, you know, somewhere to get by.
Currently, the plan does say continue support of open road options. Do you want to get more specific?
I, I, we got to get, start doing something rather than continuing support, that just means, if we were supported for many years, but now they, I agree.
That was kind of the conversation with Lynx, though, because, you know, we talked about the bus service, and, well, I can tell you, Lynx will do anything that you want them to do if you want them to pay for it. I disagree with him, because I mean, I listen to it, that Metro Plan once a month when it comes to, you know, shuttle service and anything else, or somewhere else, you know, they tell.
But that's even, you know, developing our own, you know, rotator trolling system that goes around the city, anything, I'm just, you can't, if we sit back and just go, all right, go do this, and wait for them, it's not going to come very quickly, if ever at all.
Oh, no, I don't agree.
I still disagree.
In the 2021 to 2045, we do have enhanced transit options, because we have that. But I think you're looking at something prior to that, sort of more of a planning process.
Yeah, we need to start looking at, you know, looking, so that we can start getting, we're going to have some ideas and have that help develop what's currently going on, but actually just help you overall, and then redevelop it downtown.
One thing we did do, and maybe that's one, maybe the first place that we started with that, is with our own transportation master plan, because there's a transit section there. There's a number of options that we can talk with Lynx about, like with the current flood service, and looking at maybe expanding the area with which the flood service goes in, that would be one of the really good to start. But even in our master plan, one of the things that always has stood out in our master plan is that we actually had, there's a proposal for a circulator, like you said, that runs up and down through the boulevard, that connects the old downtown to beyond the park in City Hall, so it would run up and down through the boulevard, or as we made the living use 434, but it was, and it was anticipated that it would be the city service, and it's one of those where we would be able to pay the funds, because we got to do it with Lynx. But anyway, that's what, maybe we start there with our own master plan, see what we have, and then look to start doing, as you said, start planning for expanding that.
Anybody have any objections?
Is there something about this, the plan, sorry, starting the planning process, we left, starting in 425?
45.
Okay.
Anything else on mobility and transportation? Alternative fuel charging stations. Other municipalities out, right here in some of the counties. They have an app that shows them, and it's funny, because you get out here, I mean, you go towards Lake Mary, Sanford, Altamont, they do have.
Do you want us to, sometime, start looking at it in this coming fiscal year?
I'd like to see, as we go into the late development of how we incorporate it there. You know, for instance, when I was speaking with the general manager, regional guy, from the Alhams, the other evening, and they happened to see the car, you know, we were discussing it, you know, as soon as I told the Buffalo Wild Wings has charging stations, you know, they asked me to send them information, and so, you know, that folks will actually use them, and when you have these types of vehicles, and you get the charging stations now, even if it's, you know, a charge point station, pay for it.
Did you see the one different, Walgreens and Tesco?
Yeah, Walgreens, it was a charge point, they, they charged 50 cents a ton, or something like that, and you're not going to be there long enough to get any juice. Most of them charge 13, 14 cents, 15 cents, which is what the electric company basically charges, they're just doing it as a service, providing a service, who could have that cost of the electric? You know, something, those types of stations, the municipalities, Lake Mary, Sanford, those are, I think, which are parks, too, I don't think they charge for them out there, I think they're just a service. But, you know, you know, what can you get free electricity? The more that you have, with our currently alternative fuel vehicles, you know, muzzle plank.
You still in transportation?
Yes, I am.
You know, I've seen even a couple of reports, but, you know, Brian, this is, this is very long-term, but, you know, we'll see how the wiring goes with 426 and 419, but as this city grows, I really think, and I've seen it written somewhere, that extra lane on Mitchell Hammock has got to be something, you know, for the, you know, the distant future, anyway. I mean, we got to finish that one first, and I really would like to see, and the mayor says this all the time, he's probably correct, that, that will take a lot of traffic off of Mitchell Hammock, so we may not need it, but I think it's something that we need to look for down the road. Because, you know, for me, and I think, you know, anybody who's lived up north, and we've all lived up north, seen suburbs like we have in Oviedo, and the traffic really never got totally fixed until the rail came through the suburbs, you know, we had, like, the Long Island Railroad, Metro North, or whatever, they came through, so I've had some conversations with, with Bob Delarri about that, and he said, you know, I don't think it's not a goal we can't get, you know, to have a link to come off Sun Rail, to come, you know, to Longwood, to Winter Springs, to Oviedo, see, the day they get that, is the day they'll stop having the white roads, because people, it's convenient, they will, will do it, I don't know how the transportation, you know, from Metro Plan, when you get off, you know, a state, you know, one of the stations, and your job is, you know, five miles from that, you know, how is the transportation there, it'd be nice if it went right, right there.
I mean, that is the topic du jour of every Metro Plan meeting, is flex bus. And Lynx is testing the system, but they are not funding the system. So these cities that are along the Sun Rail Route, in particular, Maitland, has been extremely vocal about flex bus, because of the distance between their station and, like you just said, Maitland Center. You know, Altamont also has their own thoughts on that, as does Longwood, but none of them is the standard.
You know, the reason, too, when you talk about, you know, people talking about, you know, it's in our thing, get to a bridge open color, and supporting that, and all this, that it may come one day, you know, we know, you know, I've had this talk, that most of this traffic in here every day, that we all get yelled at for this from other places. So you put, yeah, it's like 60%, so, so you get a bridge, now you want to build down there, you know, so eventually, even with 426 and 419 down the road somewhere, that all comes to the place, I think you're going to need it.
Well, how about we do this, we'll go in the.
It's maybe the transportation.
It's in the master plan, we'll go in and see where it has it.
Yeah.
Because it did lay out what long-term projects we need.
Right.
And we'll incorporate that into here, in the appropriate area, I think it's probably going to be 2025 and beyond.
Yeah.
But we'll look at it.
Well, there's something definitely down the road, it's going to be interesting to see if the model's all through, and 426, 419, it does take a lot of, you know.
Toll.
Now, that was.
Who were the candidates?
My time.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we'd be doing it against Bob Delarri years ago.
That Swedish word.
Yeah, Sicily.
I was thinking.
He's got a toll, which I, you're a city resident, you can use it for free. Actually, bridge open color, that's all we need. All right, let's, how are we doing on mobility and transportation? Anybody happy? Economic vitality and development. Anybody seen, maybe want to update change on the event, I think we mentioned one already. That was in conclusion to the stormwater plan.
Just one thing I could just add, and I'll, when you see the staff's blue revised city policy, I think, you know, we're going to get into it when we fix the code up, what I'd like to see eventually is, one day, this code, it's got everything written into it that we all speak to from the day it's, we have developers in here, they don't like coming in, but that it's written to where, here it is, guys, this is the code, you know, there's no more room for interpretation, you know, the five of us, the staff, we all put in there what we want, you give it to the, you know, guy coming in, here's the code, that's it, there is no deviation, there is nothing, this is what everybody decided on, so it gives you guys less gray hair in planning, and, you know, this is the code, period. I mean, there'll always be an option, yes, they can come maybe for a deviation, and want to talk, just never say you can't come and talk, but I think we really got to get all those little things we've been talking about through the years in that code, so people know when they come, this is what it is, right down to awnings, and bricks, and positions of buildings, and things like that, just so they know, I mean, just, you know, I'd jump in, I mean, wouldn't that be better for you all, that it's clear, it's concise, and you don't get calls about, hey, can I bend this, can I bend that?
That'll happen anyway. But he is right, council, it would be nice if a lot of the issues we deal with all the time, we could bring it to the code, and I think that's the goal. But that is coming up, so, what council may get sense, let's make sure we don't forget it, okay? Anything else on vitality and development? I got to throw one out there. Vision in 2050. Now, you know, we haven't sat down and done a real vision of plan, and I'm, and I'm not talking just the five of us and staff, I'm talking a charrette similar to Oviedo Park, where we fight the public, the state office, and we lay out roadmap for 2050. We listened to talk of it with one of our consulting firms, and they kind of fizzled out due to budgetary needs, but we've got to lay out that roadmap. Last time we really laid out the roadmap was 2003, when you worked at the Postcard. You know, that's, and that was while we were doing Oviedo Park, and while we were doing a lot of things, but if everybody supports that, I mean, that could be a lot different than what we've done.
Is that something we'd like to see us pursue in 2014, 15?
No, I wouldn't.
Set it up for 14, set it up in 1415, take it on in 1516.
I'd like to do it in 1415, but I know it's probably not going to happen, but, I, it's got to be, you know, this is large scale, this isn't small scale. This is 60, 70, rotate it around the city, so we get input from everybody, let everybody take ownership, so that when something starts, you know, we all get feedback that, you know, it's us, so, you know, it's the mission. We're going to get it anyway, but at least we have a master plan.
Redress all our master plans at the same time?
Steve.
Well, as I say, that, that will then, you lay out the framework, all.
Break them all, break into the transportation master plan, the park master plan, you know, look at them all, I mean, they all might be good, they all might be tweaks.
That's the same, but that, that's your idea, is, in essence, taking all those master plans, essentially. Reset, and reset the calendar.
There was talk of, of one of our HGA firms, turning the deep sock back into a storm system, making it gigantic, like again, as you had to consider this, you know, and then a good advantage to do this, I mean, obviously, you can't just talk, you can't just, like, they're whack, they were advantages, so, which else?
Well, we rolled all these strategic plans out in kind of a deliberate fashion, why don't we start reviewing them, you know, every five years, every year, take a new plan and update?
We do do that, last year, we tackled water system, obviously, transportation a couple of years ago, through the recreation update we did, 2007, so it's about time for us to take a look at recreation. So we have been bringing them back to you, not as fast, because that'd be an exlogical step, do your vision process, and then start, start that, start the other leg of your master plans.
And I might suggest, like, we had done that one time, that we had it all hanging on the walls around the council chambers, even though that was pretty cool, but, you know, just update the whole thing, the whole city, and put it on the list, here's the plan. You know, then you open up a map, and you'll kind of see the future of something, but Brian do his postcard again. All right, next one. Safety and security, is that the next one?
Yes.
Safety and security, really, yeah, where you can go, and you change this, and develop and change the issues, staff has laid out now.
Just when you, when you talk about, I mean, if you look at the goals, you know, one of the safest communities, and the key to it is, you know, maybe made by the response that's appeared a lot, I just think, especially with this budget year, you know, we can talk about all these nice things we want to do, and I say it all the time, and I know you all agree, I mean, without them, and this sense of security that the residents have, nothing, nothing else comes. So, you know, without getting into details, you know, heavy details, I just think this year, we need to hear from both, both chiefs, and have them bring us, and not worry about politics or anything, what do we really need to achieve that goal, to be the safest person, to increase these response times? You know, I want us, I've always said it, to have, you know, an overwhelming presence out there for both police and fire, so, with that, I don't like even considering cutting on us there, whatever it is, is, and I think, you know, the residents will appreciate it. I mean, all the reports we get are good, the crime is good, and we know, we respond well, but as we grow, I think we really need to take that goal seriously, and especially this budget year, the police right now are, have some things we're dealing with, but the chiefs, both of you, will bring it to us, tell us, you know, in a perfect world, this is what we really need, I mean, we're good now, but, you know, I think, as may be, to say, say to Tom Ward, you know, let's go from good to great, and that, without that foundation of them both being top-notch, not that they're not, but as we're growing, they need to grow, and we need to support that, so I just throw that out there, you know, in generality, so I don't want to get into specifics now, but they both need to be peaceful all the time.
That sounds more like a budget issue.
Yeah. I just kind of threw it out there.
My suggestion would be that the chiefs bring it to the city manager, or the city manager, because.
Yeah.
Everybody agree with that? Yes, yes, yes?
Chief, when you want to build that police Facebook pages, we got four people that are really good at it, especially this guy who helped you design it, it'd be great.
That's what we do for Facebook pages.
I have a question.
Sure.
In year 2015, 16 through 2020, we have construction of a new police headquarters facility. I thought the plan was now that, when the fire, new fire station is built, the firemen that are, firefighters that are in that building go over there, we're going to redesign, redo this, renovate that building for police, are you looking to still do that and then build?
That is, that, yes, that is still the plan. The, that was the reason we put it in 1516 through 1920, we're near that, we had constructed the new fire station first, and once that was done, obviously, while we're constructing that, we'll be going through the designing process for what to do over here, and, one of the, yes, we looked at, okay, can we just renovate the building, or is it something where we tear the building down and build a new building? And so that, that's why we put construction in the police headquarters facility, whether it's just a renovation of the existing public safety, or it's tear it down and build a new, better building, you know, that's what we're working on.
Why would you do that life cycle analysis that compared to two? Would that be in 1415, or is that still in that five-year period?
I think that's still in that five-year period. But if you, if you think it should be done in 1415, something we can definitely.
I think you, I don't mean to interrupt you, Keith, I'm sorry, I mean, I like to see kind of coordinated more with, you know, us fires moving out, or planting, you know, not leaving it sit as a shell for two or three years.
That's, that's, that's.
I think that's what counts.
And, you know, and we're going through this, this phase, and we've taken a 40-year building, one of which we renovated in the last 10 years, and then we found out the next building we were going to renovate that's actually cheaper, tear it down and build a new one, because of the technology that exists today that didn't exist.
I don't think any arguments with the chief on that. His eyes just lit up.
On a 20 or 30-year timeline, it would benefit us, it would. I'm talking from a case study, $200,000 over a 20 or 30-year period, I would say, go in and build a new building, maintaining an old one, and having to pay the energy bill and the maintenance bill.
I don't think you have any objections on that, on the table? Is that the main goal of the call? Anything else? Safety and security.
No, sir.
Do you want us to start the analysis in 1415, or is that something that we?
I think if you want to implement a project in that five-year contract, you're going to start.
Okay.
It's probably okay, because you're doing all that.
What's the plan on starting with the fire station?
I know it's close. Can you, can you come out and update on the fire station?
Sure.
Design?
Yes, we are, we're very close to updating the design.
They're ready to build somewhere across.
It's close.
Very close.
Happy anniversary, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
You're a lucky guy.
I am very lucky.
Was it tonight?
Was. No, it's past.
Oh.
What are you doing?
The lightness.
It's a bit difficult.
It continues.
Listen, the four of us at the table, you'd be definitely married up, has to chug, but you know.
Oh, no, I do. Thanks for progressing very well, we've gone through the first round of development, review comments, and building, and fire construction plan and comments, we addressed some of those pertinent issues. We are awaiting our final approval from our water authority folks, and FD and P wastewater, all of that has been filed and submitted. We will be developing the construction bid documents over the next two weeks, we anticipate going out to bid in July, be a 30-day advertising period, which is pretty common. In October, we would suspect to August, September timeframe to come back to you with a recommended contractor, to award, to work contract. Construction will take about 60 to 90 days to start following that, so that would be roughly late December or early January. About nine months construction timeframe is a pretty good estimate for that site, so around August 2015, we probably would be a certain occupancy of the new fire station. And we also successfully just renegotiated a little bit of the project with that guy, they had agreed to award $51,826, which reimburses us for the installation of a natural gas line, or extended gas line for Mitchell Hammock, Alphatea Trail to the site, which is very important, because it gives us a permanent fuel supply source for emergency power generator, gas water heaters, gas cooking, et cetera, and it's of the sufficient size that if we ever renovate the water tanks in the back, or the whole flat roof, pump building into an EUC, or whatever the chief's for, that it'll accommodate that building as well.
Should we upsize it for future development that may occur?
Well, it is large enough, additional capacity we can tap into, they make sure of that, and special thanks to our public works and engineering staff, because they have worked diligently to secure us some filter of construction value and quality, which they have done successfully, you see that stop piling on the site. Our early estimates are about $100,000, $150,000 in landfill that's needed for this project, so we think we've probably accumulated about half of that amount, or pennies on the dollar, really, so they've done an awesome job. Now, for the site itself, we've done a little value engineering to the bid documents to try to hold our costs down, we are going to alternate bid, some of the brick architecture on the building, so the sites in the back might not have brick, have a decorative finish like we did on the eastern fire station, but the front, we still have the old brick aesthetic qualities to it, we can save some money there. There's a fire training tower that's on the back, that's an alternate bid, just not quite sure what that would cost. sure what that would cost, and might be something we have to renovate. And a portion of the expanded parking for the recreation elements in the back will be an alternate bid as well. We'll accommodate what exists today, but we were having a few issues with the well in the back and the setback requirements anyway, so get through site development review process. It was easier to select that as an alternate bid. And we removed one of the truck bays off of the apparatus bay itself. So we've done just about as much pinching as we can do to this site. It's not a green building, but it has a lot of energy efficiency built into it, has an innovative mechanical air handling system, should say with some calls, some improved isolation. So we're pretty excited to get this handled.
Don't value engineer it.
No, we've done as much trimming as we probably should. We're still, we're combining two stations into one, and we're still be capable of a little overstaffing for hurricane events and things of that nature.
Anything for the chief?
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on, we're up to recreation arts and culture. Anybody seen anything there? Brian, I have one suggestion. You know, we have to organize a program for events at Oviedo Park. That'll be coming along at the end of the budget year. So not only for the next budget year, but I'd like to see us have it all planned out. Frankly, I'd like to see something this budget year, but that's just my thing.
Chief, how long has that been over there?
Well, it's been in two phases. We had some felt two months ago procured, and then more just last week.
Has it shown up on Google Earth?
It's shown up.
That's pretty current.
It's flying over us right now as we speak.
My question for you, that area's not a flush zone, is it?
No.
Okay. So if we get a rain, it's not going to push water in the neighborhood or anything?
No, it's actually pretty high in dry areas.
May I just to address your question, Mr. Bowler? Has already started the process. But it is something that we can, we can put something together for that to use.
Is that going to be a budget item as we're going through the budget process? Am I putting the cart ahead of the horse, I guess, as I was asking?
It is sort of part of the budget process. If you think about, the park's going to open up around the April, March, April, May timeframe, but we are, we will be budgeting for a certain amount of programs and events from opening to September. So it won't be a full year in the budget, but he's already, one of the things that he and I have been talking about is trying to develop a calendar essentially and to bring in the different functions into the park, not only just looking at events, but also looking at other types of programs as well.
Kickoff, ban, alone, you know, mouse and stuff.
Right.
Is there any in the new downtown, is there anything, you know, I had this conversation with Bob, Bob wants to learn it. You know, you ever go to Disney at night and like, you know, you never get bit by a mosquito?
Right.
Do we have, we have concerts out there at night, and there's a couple thousand people out there. Are we going to have anything out there because it's to our benefit? If you're out there all the time and you're getting bit by mosquitoes and all this stuff, what are we going to look into? Or maybe we can get Tom to help us out a little bit for a system out there. People are out there, they say, hey, this is great, and they go out and you go out at night to the parks, they have whatever systems they have, and you don't get it. So just maybe we could just broach the subject with somebody, maybe Tom or more. Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. I think about that.
Partnership with the county to do spraying.
Yeah, but spraying doesn't go so much. These are, these are systems that just like, there will be none out there. You know, you won't get, and we want, we don't want to get a reputation that it's got that issue, so maybe we just look into it, see what's available, you know, if it's something we could do. Make the park, market turn go.
The next, whatever.
Yeah. And you don't have to do that until Monday.
Well, that's our next section and stuff.
Yeah. But just keep in it.
When you say development, we just talk of any kind of development, it may be just grass, whatever, marketing, or hay.
As far as flow, huh? Yeah. Yes, we're going to start out and looking at hay is what we're going to look at, and then if we need, if we have to scale down, we'll scale down to the grass park. We still feel that in that, in that environment, the grass park could really be appropriate, but there are some challenges that we have. The property does fall off, cluttered with weather, and so depending on how much fuel we require. It was just a goal that we had. Because of the opening at the end of the year, we just felt that it was very important that we bring a parking lot on Lot 5. It's just as the interim use, because I know we've always talked about the possibility of Lot 5 being a development parcel, which is felt that we need to bring that parking lot in or bring it online along with the park. We felt that was very important, so that's why we put that in for 2014, 15. Mr. Wyatt had several discussions, and they've already started looking at how we can do that in the end with our designers.
If you make it appropriate, I'm going to put the water somewhere. If you make it appropriate, if you make that distribution, great job, so that most precious blood is the grass park. With that distribution, that is, that's where I'm looking for.
And that's what we're pretty good looking at. We're going to look and see.
Put those little concrete things there so everybody knows we're spot.
We're spot, that's it. I think initial design, something, if I remember correctly, it was around 250 spaces, I think.
Well, that's, I was just talking to Tom. We're going to be detailed, separate layers. Now, you're not talking about the top and all of that.
No, that's all.
Anything else, Matt?
Do you allow Mr. Bowler to just give you a sort of an insight to some of the things he's working on?
Why don't we do that, Mr. Bowler's up here.
Okay.
He'll be up here in a minute. You can open up with that. So we'll start on the side. Community character. Anybody seeing anything?
Architecture standards. Can we make a different architecture standards for apartments and have a category apartments versus townhomes, differentiate between owner occupied and not owner occupied? So we have a standard for not a apartment, so we have different zoning classification, apartment that's not owner occupied and instead of an owner. And we have multifamily mixed use, but you can, under mixed use falls multifamily.
You're proposing that we have that?
As an, as an added category. Added category, separate out multifamily family to become fee simple as opposed to multifamily.
Right. Is there, as far as rental versus owner occupied, is there a higher standard for one over the other? I just like that, I like the standards for both of them to move up. I like to just be separate that way. As part of design, you're looking at what type of ownership as part of the design of the community and how to make it for the community. Will it be owner occupied or will it be an apartment or rental facility? Makes a difference in, I don't know what to say.
Oh, the character of the building, the height of the building changes.
Right, that things, you know, that manages things like that change. So I like, you know, to kind of start looking at that, look at those, address those changes. And again, especially as we move, redeveloping downtown, even Oviedo Boulevard, you know, so you could have different size units, differential size of units for rental, things like that.
Can we, okay with that?
I'm not sure I understand it. Let's go. We have an issue, it comes everything together. It all falls under issues, classifying owner occupied and rental use. We'll see what we can do.
I have one more.
Sure.
Under 2015, 16 through 19, 20, we have developed and execute branding effort. Do you think it might be a good idea to move that up with everything that's going on in the city and that we want to park coming together, that we should start to, start to focus on that a little?
We started, we stopped.
Yeah, we started and we stopped, but maybe we should get going again on that so that we're ready with that branding.
As much as we complain, but I don't think we're that far off the mark when we do that. Was it last year or the year before?
Brian, maybe we should bring it back. Team members.
Well, especially if you're looking at redeveloping Facebook pages, that, you know, all this stuff that starts branding everything.
Did we ever get our final branding thing?
Oh, was it? We need him back in. We thought we would give you the right. Quite honestly, I can let this face out of speech, but we thought we would give you the right about putting the Facebook social media here. Let the best.
Doesn't have to be high. It's easy. Counselor, it might be time to stop there. After the bucket, we've got a lot of things on, you know, like quiet time, can't get very federal, might not be that, you know, deep house. You know, like full holidays, it's kind of quiet center.
At least give us thinking about it again and looking for options.
We can definitely move into 14, 15, as a goal for 14, 15. You know, if we get to a point where we end up doing it, like you said, later on this year, then at least we're still within that year and getting back into this one.
Snipe signs, litter, stuff like that, we're going to talk about that on the next item on the agenda, or do you want to talk about that?
Well, if you wanted to talk about this as sort of a citywide issue, obviously, this is the area to talk about it, citywide, Mr. Bowler, the next item would just point at this in very specific areas.
We started to ramp it up, you know, the economy tag, we cut back on it, you know, as an overall, I think it has to be right, you know, that we pick back up on.
I think the staff after picking up signs, just want to see them.
Bowler, we are just talking, I'm telling you, the local here, the whole, you know, make sure, you know, each weekend, the nighttime person's out there, one, because we miss a lot of weekends. Pass them once.
What message do you have? Mayor, as far as something that if you were to put into the community character of the folks, or what is something that we need to encourage, like increased?
Consistent. Consistent, more consistent. You know, on the weekends, you know, for a while there, we had, we made sure some people had it every weekend, and now, you know, like Monday morning calls are made, it's always all this person had it all, that person had it all, we need to fill it in, and let's just make sure that it's consistent.
And that's almost time time?
Snipe signs first, and then litter, garbage, you know, for instance, in our, I'll give you a tech, a drag test, when we go to Oviedo Boulevard, you know, we've owned that buffer between Oviedo Boulevard and Kingsbridge for nine, 10 years, and the same well pump and expansion chamber and all that garbage is still sitting there. I mean, you know, just go back and rip it out. It's never been used.
Kind of, maybe I'm just.
Okay, that's, that's a good one, that's fine. Hey, it's here.
Taking care of those little things that.
Little things that make a difference. Especially now if my car's lower than the ground, I see more.
It's a little slower. The oil car speeds a bit.
I have one more. In year 2021 through 24, 25, we have undertaken neighborhood improvements in mature areas. I think there are some areas in our mature areas that should be looked at before six, six more years pass by. If we could, I'd like to have that moved up just to the 15, 16 through 19, 20. Just move it up a little. Start looking at it.
I guess, send me a call table.
Just punch you up there, one mature neighborhood, the next newest neighborhood.
Say what's mature neighborhood, that's, I would say what's a mature neighborhood, that's the fund it. So 2024, which one isn't?
And I should say, if you let too much time goes by, then you have too big of an area to start looking at.
It's much like the, the road, you know, the road repaving, you know, baselining and attaching, taking care of and setting up an ongoing, but maybe developing a plan in the next couple of, five years, developing a plan, just start to get that process together. There should be an ongoing reality.
Sure.
But you need a plan, much like road, road repaving. That was, that was one of the things that, this was, this was one of those where we were really challenged about where to look to do everything, because when we went back and tried to break up the sections that were had with the development of the home, we really had time. Because a lot of, one of the questions we asked were, we asked, what is this? You know, and of course, my first thing was we ran through the I-NO program, that we're not really sure that's what that is. And then was it infrastructure? Are we going and looking at our older neighborhoods and the infrastructure needs for them, and there's a.
A little bit of all that.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a little bit of all that. It's something as simple as replacing streets that have been developed, or so many of them that are worn, you know, it's driving around, cracked or bent. Yeah, you know, it should be something as simple as that.
But yeah, it's, in the next five, you know, start, we're throwing lots at next year, but develop a plan over the next five years for that, that first identifies what are those things, that here's the things, what are key areas? There's entrance ways, the cities that may want to key off at first, if they're entrance raised, or maybe.
Just the street light, hold on, I know they're working with Duke, and Duke, they lock, push back, we push back.
We've been getting a lot, but to see that, that's a big change, and those, those street lights look.
Do they replace a lot of them?
Yeah, some of them, I know they. Some of the places that you paint a lot, they look tremendously better, just that part.
You know, like in the new downtown, if we're going to do street signs, whether it be black and white or whatever. All right, we're going to have a little, and, and, and he, maybe it's not a good point, but you go through Winter Park, they have different signs. Is there anything in our code that says we have to, when we change a sign, use that green and white sign? Like, why couldn't we start when we have to change them, start putting up signs that are, you know, at the same price that would, you know, make the neighborhood a little, little better if it's good for the downtown, something needs a new sign. I mean, I realize that, that might be a little confusing because there's so many, but I mean, green and white is the standard traffic color, it's everything, why don't we just start making neighborhoods when we change them, put something?
Something with a logo on it, like Castleberry Stone, when you drive the castle part of the changing wall with a logo on it.
With a logo on it, that would really, people would really like that.
Citystone.
Yeah, people would really like it. I don't know if it's going to, you know, but is it, is it, is there a sign that we use now? We obviously favor those signs, we make them, I mean, is it, is it much more of a cost to put the city seal on it and make it a different color? I mean, I'm not saying we'll call it different colors, discussion, I don't know if we want to change it.
Well, that was one of the things that, I know Mr. Wyatt, when he came to you, said, would you prefer white background, black letters, or black background, black letters? One of the reasons was, was so that he could, to create a, you know, you're in downtown by the, oh, it's the white signs, and that was what he, that was one of the reasons that he did, rather than using the same green background with one leg. We can definitely look into, see how we can explain that.
Would it be a confusing thing, though, if you, if counsel wanted to do it, that you went into a neighborhood that's got some signs that aren't going to be replaced, and you had different ones, or could you change them as you went out, so eventually they'd all get done? Or with that, you know, for traffic stuff or police stuff, I mean, is that going to confuse people? He's got a black and white, he's green, then this guy said, well, I want that too, you're not ready yet, you get like a road, road.
Yeah, it's like I said, I think, Mr. Wyatt, it was, and actually, maybe we explained instead of just turn downtown, you're in a B, that turned out.
Yeah, that's.
We're, we're looking at that right now. We're, we're working with our IP department, giving service fund to do a way of finding updated way of finding spending on the items on that list, the street signs, to create that sense of place coming in. The black and white we did downtown was our example of what we're looking for, preferably the winter park, a little white, you know, in the winter park, it was a little white. I mean, that's, that's the background idea to find behind it. He thought we could do it in the downtown district internally with staff, and if it works well there and it's well received, he'd recommend that with the way you find his study to change the color of the signs to match. The only requirement on, on street IDs is that they're contrasting colors.
Right. Right.
From a, from a, from a, from a visibility, take me any color you want. We did, we started adding logos to them a couple of years ago with replacement. Um, you know, we just don't, we didn't replace them. New ones do have single logos as to them, the ones downtown do, and creative items we put out the last couple of years. So we started adding that. The difference in cost is very minimal, because you know, you're paid by the square, square foot of sheeting, and that extra little nine by nine, or that, that's set them up to it.
Good.
Yeah.
Last one. High performance government. This one has a lot of changes. We do not agree with any of the changes. Let the staff prepare.
I guess I'm honored I can take you under advisement.
Brian, I think you did a great, a great job with that. Uh, you know, part of high performance government is obviously staffing, you know, staffing is an issue. We want you all to know that, and I speak for all of us, I think we all realize that we're doing more with less, and if we want more done, and more done, and more done, at some point, we're going to have to increase staff and increase, decrease workload that we're putting on top of our front right now. And I see that as a goal. I agree with it. Uh, we're coming out of a recessionary period that we're in, you know, we can start getting back to what made Oviedo great. Not that it's not, and not that you guys haven't done exceptionally, but, uh, you know, I think we need a few more Indians around here.
Well, that was the thing, Mayor. Obviously, I know I, I walked into this, this, this office one day, and I've got six items I want to accomplish. Why don't we start the process of rebuilding our organization? And we want to, I don't want to rush and just have a big flux.
No, that was Jerry Seaver's answer.
We want to, we want to do it correctly, we want to, we want to do it in a fashion that is feasible. And, but we do need to start the process of rebuilding, because we do have, um, I know, I mentioned to Mayor one day that, you know, we have two people sheltering the bird, and, um, that's, that's one of the things that we really need to start looking at, is how we're sheltering the bird, um, like I said, rebuilding our organization.
Well, to my observation, as I see everything getting done exceptionally, that I see the little details getting, I don't want to say forgotten, because I know they're not forgotten, they're just not able to get, not able to get, but it's only, you know, so many hours in the day and some days of the week, you know, the, the, the simple things as, you know, keeping the website, keeping the Facebook, keeping the city clean, keeping, uh, the police force and the staffing it needs, the, the, the raver staff, the staffing it needs. I mean, those are things we have to start to address.
I think the, the deputy mayor and I had a really good conversation with him, we were talking about it. I think I.
He were much nicer since he's been here.
I, I think it's words surviving. I, I did, I used the word surviving. He asked me how we're doing, we're surviving, that's what we did. Our conversation was talking about how, how do we look, how do we look out three or four years? You know, as a city manager, that's what I would love to be doing, is looking at three or four years, and how do we position ourselves three or four, five years out. And the one thing that we were talking about that day was how can we do that? But in order for us to really get into doing that, we've got to get out of the survival build, just the survival one, I think that's what we're doing right now, we're in the survival one. So.
Brian, I, I, I really got to pay some homage, and I agree, everything that the mayor, mayor said, and, you know, you're the first city manager that in very short time, that's because you've been here so long, but you just hit it all on, on the head. And to all of you and your staff, I mean, don't think it, it goes unrecognized. I mean, I've been here for nine years, you know, collectively, I think I told somebody, you know, there's like 50, 60 years of experience sitting at this day, it's from council members, and it doesn't go unnoticed, unrecognized, everything you guys do. I mean, for what's going on in this city and how you all respond to it, um, you know, and some of some not, not so nice jobs, you know, that people have to do. I mean, I saw this Paul, and I come out of my, my neighborhood, taking off this sewer cap, and I'm, oh, I'm chill, chill, this guy got his shots, everything good. I mean, things that you, that you look out for, police officers, you know, when I drive down the road at night, Chief, I say this to you all the time, um, and that's a lonely walk to that car in the dark and all of that, you know, and, you know, everybody just needs to know that we appreciate it, and the mayor hit it right on the head. We're going to rebuild this top 10 city, the top 10 opportunities and the stress level on all of you. I mean, when workers are overwhelmed, they don't perform well. And it'd be nice to, uh, like Brian said, to, to rebuild a little bit, but, you know, the last five or six years of the recession, you guys have all really stepped up and, you know, we all noticed it. So I think over the next couple of years, to strap in and, uh, you know, we're going somewhere great, but we can't do it without you guys. Only you guys that stood with us through all of the bad times, you know, will be the great example to the people we bring on to tell them how it was, but certainly I think the sooner the better to rebuild and, and get some stress off these folks, get some stress off all of us and, you know, go out there and perform even better than we can do. You know, it's easier when you got, you know, three people that can do the job than asking one guy to go and do it all, you know, so you guys are awesome and we appreciate it. And we're, we're going to get you where you need to get, so just hang in there and, you know, Chief, tell, uh, some of the boys, go, put applications in, we're all working on it, so, so, so good. But Brian, you get everything that I, I was thinking, you know, that no other city manager ever put me for, so that's good for you.
Anything else, Mayor?
This one? Could I, this is my last request, and that is, could we have some creative license for, um, say, myself, and do some further tinkering with this to make it more of a viable tool?
We'll take, we'll take it under your advice. Happy sellout. And Brian, I think it's a lot of decisions that you put here to fully addressing, as opposed to much of the position, I'm just, I'm just, your call.
Yes.
Your question. Is there anything else that you need from us on this side?
Like I said, this wasn't the business. And unless there's something that I, my dollars can learn from you all, you know, uh, this has been wonderful, we ran, we did a lot of information, really glad you spoke up and gave us some priority.
Can I give one little quick question? I know you're working on this, the, the Methodist Committee, you've got us partnering and where we're at with that, and you have, you have any updates or you still where you are?
We're still down.
Do you follow?
Yes. Good.
I'm good.
Anybody need a five minute break before we jump into the next one?
Sure.
We've got a hard kind of.
Three minutes.
I'm, I'm good.
No, I'm good.
You good?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move over here just for one second, I want to grab something.
There's probably not many more stuff here. You guys could still do that, I appreciate it. Just hold on. Back, back in March, when it was all the, uh, our, our plan to build the park, and how to build it all in one phase, uh, one of the discussions that we had was about staffing the park. And I, I got really concerned, because our discussion went from an overall view to a very focused view, and we were talking about outsourcing. And knowing that the park's going to be open, uh, so I thought it was important that we look at how we're going to maintain this park, and some of these are very, in my mind, a lot of it. Um, but the thing about it was, was that I knew there were certain things that we may not be able to outsourced, I mean, we have to be consistent. And I knew that there were some things that, that possibly were key. And some, some folks took their own initiative, uh, Mr. Kavanaugh took his own initiative, went to his maintenance company and said, what could you do? What would it cost for you to maintain the park? They gave him a clue. Mr. Waller went to CFL and gave, said, what would, what would it cost for you all to take this on? But the thing about it is, is that they gave him an idea of something to do, but they just no one had really asked you, what are your expectations for maintaining the park? One of the things, and the reason I had this map made, and Lynn will be able to pull it up once Drew gets done with his, but when you think about what we've got to do, this is our park right here. But when you look at Boardwalk, and you look at City Plaza, and you look at Center Lake and Macabre Way, they're essentially parks in and of themselves. They're, they're streets unlike anything that we have here in the city. There's planters, there's street furniture, there's trash cans, there's favors, there's all these different fountains, you know? And also, one of the things Mr. Kavanaugh's been very vocal about lately is about Oviedo on the park, Oviedo Boulevard. He would like Oviedo Boulevard to complement Oviedo on the park. And so one of the things that we've started looking at, and what I would like to learn from you all tonight, is what's your expectations for how we maintain these areas? And do you feel the same way as Mr. Kavanaugh, that Oviedo Boulevard should be a compliment to Oviedo on the park? And one other question that just hit me just over the weekend was, how far up the road do we want to go? I mean, do we, do we start it at, if we want to do an increased maintenance, or if we want it consistent maintenance, do we do it from the roundabout down, or do we go all the way up to 419? I mean, it's just something to think about as we're having the discussion. But what I did was, I went to Mr. Bullware and I said, okay, no one's ever asked Council what their expectations were for maintaining these areas, but I would like you to give Council your expectations, because as the Recreation Director, he has a very high level of how he would like to see the parks maintained. Now, I can't tell you that it's a feasible level at times, but he has a very high level. And so what I asked him to do is put together what you feel needs to be done here. I don't want to talk about who does it, I don't want to talk about what equipment is involved, I don't want to talk about what costs involved, I want to talk about what we did. And so one of the things we did, we gave you some equivalents, so Mr. Waller, Mr. Bullware, um, there's, you know, there is. Um, everybody chipped in to help me put together, we looked at equivalents, we looked at this campus. This campus involves buildings, it involves hardscape, it involves landscape, uh, definitely the parking lot, you know, a lot of different things on this campus, the stormwater farms. Uh, we also looked at the gym and aquatics, and this one was, actually, this campus finished third. Um, we looked at the gym and aquatics, and we also looked at Riverside Park Skate Point. All of those have elements of hardscape, landscape, buildings, massive stormwater areas. And so all those different things combined, and so that's what we started looking at. And one thing to think about, the reason we gave you those equivalents, was to think about your impressions of these facilities. Should this be maintained on the same level as these facilities, or should it be maintained at a higher level than these facilities? Because if you think about, you know, how we maintain these facilities, you know, that's what we thought, they're equivalent, because they do combine all the different aspects of what you're going to be seeing in here. Now, probably the biggest difference is that there's, what, three fountains?
Five.
Five fountains and a wet deck. Now, I don't know how that's comparable to an Olympic sized swimming pool, you know, in a, in a, a kiddie pool, you know, or even other with a smaller, uh, competition pool, but you can think about along the same lines of swimming pool, the wet deck, I mean, that's one of the things Mr. Bullware told me, so that wet deck is no different from that swimming pool. You know, you're going to have the same issues involved, and as far as the fountains as well, you know, same issues with water and types of things that can grow in that water. Uh, so different challenges, different challenges, obviously, but, you know, equivalent challenges. So that's the thing that we wanted to do. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bullware, because I wanted you to hear his opinion. Let me tell you my goal for tonight. My goal for tonight is to alarm your expectations, get them down on paper, um, then we'll sit down and we'll work with our staff to develop, I think, David, what was, Bobby called it, a bid sheet? Is that what he called it?
When you develop the specifications that you set out.
Specifications. We'll take that, we'll take, we'll develop the specifications based on your input, and then we'll take those, that one thing, and we'll go to the CFL, so we'll go to Mr. Kavanaugh and say, hey, have your group look at this. And we will look at what they can do. And then what they can do, we can also look at staff. Now, I'm also challenging Mr. Bullware, he's going to look at an all staff option board. But the main part about it is, is that what needs to be done will be common throughout the entire, uh, specifications. So that's what I'd like to learn from you tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bullware.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Counsel. Good evening. Uh, basically, what, what we did was we put together expectations of what we, if we were going to run the facility, or machine the facility, that type of thing, of what we would look at at the type of level. And I'm not going to read everything on here. If you can go, yeah, I'm going to kind of tap to the chase. Uh, if you can go to the next page, please.
Sorry.
This almost looks like the expectations. Well, this is, this is our expectations, this is what, what I want you to understand is, this is what, if, if we're, if we're to look at what we would want to do, this is what our expectations, our staff's expectations. Um, first of all, mowing schedule. Basically, with the mowing schedule, you've got high level, I mean, high season mowing at this time of year, when it's raining more, that type of thing. You've got lower level, in cool weather. Um, you've got to possibly additional mowing schedule according to, you know, how we use the park in the future, special events and that type of thing. Um, mowing schedule, of course, includes everything from edge of weed and pulling, uh, weed pulling daily, blowing off the hardscape, uh, you know, we're looking at, doing that at least once a day, certain areas probably will have to do at least twice a day. Trash pickup, one of the things I know that we have, uh, had a hard time with, uh, is over the last few years, is trash pickup on Oviedo Boulevard. Uh, we would get, the trash pickup's going to have to be at least two times a day, seven days a week, uh, with constant monitoring throughout the day, uh, special events and other activities, rental, we require additional pickups and servicing.
Where do you base that on? What's your base on that?
As far as the two times?
Yeah.
We base it upon our park, as far as, like, OSC, we base it upon Riverside Park, we base it upon, uh, the gym, we normally do early mowing pickup, garbage, and then we go again late in the evening after a day of use, a heavy use. And a lot of our facilities, of course, get heavy used. Now, some of our facilities, some are smaller facilities, and they get one day service. But we realized that over the last few years, between public works and RAG, prior to CFL taking over this year, the garbage pickup on Oviedo Boulevard, as well as the bus stops or the, you know, the, yes, I'm thinking, um, you know, there, there, we were doing four days a week, I believe CFL was doing one day, and then as needed.
Once per week.
Once per week, and we were doing it prior four days a week, which was public works and RAG, or excuse me, parks. Uh, and, and that's based upon, you know, usage days. Uh, big, big heavy days are always Mondays, because after the weekend, uh, middle of the week, Doug?
Mark.
Is that right?
Yes.
And then.
Ryan is a real man.
Yeah. So, you know, we, we look at this downtown area, this, uh, an area that's probably going to be a very high use area because of that people, but we just think they'll be busy amongst all the different elements that we have around the lake. Uh, landscaping, uh, you know, as far as pocket areas and stuff like that, the one thing about it, on the park, uh, you have trees, you have low level, uh, ground, but you have a lot of pocket areas and a lot of plants that are going, you know, if we want to change, as we're doing a lot of the parks, a different look, we normally do flower planters quarterly, and then we replace the dead material as needed throughout the year. Uh, tree trimming, tree, or, you know, you know, ornamentals and tree trimming, usually once per year, of course, when initially, they won't need a lot of tree trimming, you know, a year or another, but a year, two years, we can train all of that kind of stuff. And a lot of it also, again, is according to public safety as far as coverage and things like that. Turf realization, uh, the, the lot itself is, is a huge, huge concern. Uh, a lot of it is based upon the usage, certainly foot traffic during the year. Uh, you know, we're saying at least set applications for Bermuda grass, uh, you know, that could change depending on the foot traffic and, you know, as far as we have a lot of compact areas. areas throughout the year. And then, of course, all the other areas, so hey, extra applications a year just for turf realization. Next, slight ornamental visualization, that's our tree and ground, when we do that once per year, flatter, fire, pine, or squirrely. Irrigation is a big thing, we do it weekly. We have to check, there's a lot of things, a lot of little pieces to check when you're talking about irrigation. So, you know, that, that's, and that's a big area out there, there's a lot of area that's getting watered. Pest control, which includes weeds and insects, we normally give insects once per year as a preventative, we do additional applications as necessary. Weeds, we do two pre-emergent applications per year, preventative, and then we do two post-emerged applications when weeds are present. You spoke earlier about mosquito control, one of the things that we also, you know, know is going to be needed since we are right there next to weapon, is, you know, stormwater and mosquito control, especially, you know, for special events and things like that. One of the last things we need is to start scheduling a special advance, and people can't sit there in the evening because it's so, you know, widely during certain times of the year and stuff, you know, out of control. So, that's one of the things that are, are concerned. Yes, we do have the county that can't even spray, but I think we're going to have to look at other areas to possibly control that.
Yeah, there's other, are there other systems?
Other systems?
Yeah, other systems.
Hardscape surfaces, there is a whole heck lot of brick here, and pavement here, and so, you know, maintenance includes blowing off all the hardscapes, and all that stuff is, you know, we're looking at at least probably some areas twice a day. Dog park and splash pad has to be done, that's just, the dog park's going to have to be washed down at least twice a day. The splash pad will be done twice a day, seven days a week, the playground area will be done, you know, quarterly, but at least, at least once a day. Of course, like I said earlier, we have to monitor all the ground trash, that's not just a trash can.
It's like, I don't wash under the dog areas and the grass.
It's artificial turf, so when they go, if they are not good customers and pick it up, we're going to have to monitor and go and pick it up, and once it dries, it's going to have to wash down again later. So, that's one of the things that we're going to have to do. Pressure washing, I mean, you know, sidewalk?
Do you angle the grass down, kind of flush the system?
There is a, it is, it's been built to where it will be able to flush, but it's through the process of the, of the, the grass to the base and wash it before it goes into the drink of the stormwater. But as far as, I don't think there's an actual?
I'm not saying flush it.
Yeah, I understand.
But you have it at an angle, and you've got a little catch base, and you just, you know, they're, they're going to get a little footbuckle or something, and they, shh, always step, all the time.
I understand.
Basically, the drain.
We would, I mean, I know, I know that, you know, one of the things to look at at other dog parks and such, a lot of them are national grass, this one's not a huge area. And because of it, we felt like, because of fleas and ticks, we're going to start to spray, dogs will tear up grass in the instance, you know, so this one was.
You're going to spend a lot of time there.
Pressure, pressure washing, sidewalks, pavers, retaining walls, and all of our services, that is at least probably twice a year, a lot of it will be as needed, based upon events and things like that.
I think that's my one, I've mentioned it, it's probably heard me say it probably three or four times, it's just like when we went to the Morris, and we saw the guy out there, it's got to be scheduled, we can't, to me, it's just, it's got to be a scheduled thing.
Oh, yeah.
Just like painting, whatever, it's not a matter of paint's chipping painted, it's getting, starting to get stained clean, and it's, can't be stained.
Yep. I mean, one of the things that I know, we've talked at park scale on this, is, you know, one, if we started, we started handling, guy had pressure cleaning at Mitchell Hall, and he started pressure cleaning at Mitchell Hall, and he all the way to Avito Boulevard, back all the way to 434, and started, you'd probably keep one guy busy all year doing that, doing a pressure clean.
John, will you place it there?
Place it, and that's why, that's why.
Good exercise.
Good exercise. Fencing, fencing, we have to do inspection daily, and then, of course, repairs needed. There's not a lot of fencing out there, but there is some, fencing along the retaining wall on the north side of the lot, there'll be fencing around the dog park, and we have some railing around the boardwalk area. Chicken boats in the dock area, and the maintenance that goes with those. We've got to clean and inspect the boats after each use to make sure that someone hasn't gotten out there, and they've gotten sick in the boat, and that type of thing. We've also got to, you know, lubricate the boats, also, you know, inspect the boats weekly, and rinse the dock at least two times a day, make sure that it's nice and clean, not slippery and that type of thing. Dog park, we, I kind of mentioned that, but I wash the turf at minimum two times a day, and we've got to maintenance the dog park stations at least three times a day or periodically, check in between, we've got sprays for flicks and ticks at least monthly. We've got to clean the treatment of the filtration system at, per the manufacturer's recommendation. Playground, playground has to decide being watered off and cleaned on a daily, weekly basis, we have to do monthly inspections, and annual pressure clean as needed. Lighting, there's a lot of lighting out there, so our street lighting, as well as also in the park, and the amphitheater, and the cultural center, inspection will be performed by, will be performed by weekly, and make so much form as needed. Then we also have, of course, our decorations, we, on all our courses, we have it where we can put banners and city decorations up for holidays and things like that, Public Works has done that in the past, so, you know, that's work that will have to be performed as far as changing out banners and decorations according to the seasons and holidays. Splash pad, the splash pad has got to be treated just like a pool, there's health state can count mandated guidelines as far as testing and adjusting chemicals level daily, as far as maintaining it, the cleanliness and that type of thing. Splash pads are just like pools, if you have someone who accidentally has an accident, you've got to close it down, and it has to be cleaned and completely processed before you really go back down. How, how we are looking at this right now, we are looking at it as far as a maintenance type schedule, not to actually have it to our staffing, because they're present at all times. It's one of those things we're looking at, that we will have, hopefully, staffing within the park will be able throughout the day, watch this, so that if something like this happens, then we can, we can take care of it. A lot of things dealing with that, you've got to check your holding tanks for debris, clean out skimmer, and you've got to clean your strainer baskets, check flow rates, you've got to check your return drains for debris, you've got to do all that type of thing, three times a day, you've got to backwash filters two times a day. You've got, as I mentioned earlier, I've got five fountains in the park, the fountains have strainer baskets in, and you're going to have to do skimmer to make sure that people, you know, and I, well, as I've told Mr. Cobb several times, there will be times when you do an upcoming work and see sets, you know, in the fountains, it happens, you know, teenagers and college students, they get fun when you see bubbles coming out of the fountains, so.
How we put all the cameras?
I was just going to say, make sure the cameras are on there, you know?
That's something we can look at, and then, of course, the, you know, they've got to be, you know, chemical levels have to be checked on that, but not to the same degree, of course, as the splash pad.
A thoughtful, systematic work, of course.
Yes, that does sound, that does sound, yes. Shrink sweeper, you know, monthly or as needed, according to special events and that type of thing, and possibly get them in and cleaned.
Do we have roads sweeper?
Yes.
Does it add capacity now? Will these extra roads, will we be able to handle these extra roads?
We sweep based on objective, we hit every road once a month, you know, assuming it's up and running, we hit that target.
So, this will jeopardize that?
Not that, not roadway, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Put in your traffic counter measures, that's as needed, that's in case, like, if we want to check something, to see how many people might come in for a special thing, that type of thing, or, you know, just to see. Stormwater ponds, aquatic weed control, also as far as mowing and that type of thing. And then, of course, this system, as I understand it, has this, you can ask David about this, but it's got storm filter replacement within the stormwater system, so they have, the filters have to be replaced every other year, Mr. White gave me that information. So, that's basically kind of it in the park. Lot, lot, lot of little pieces to maintain every bit of them from out and around. The next one is the building maintenance, I'm not going to give you all this, but as you can see, there's a, there's a whole heck lot that we do within, and I can tell you the closest building to this would probably be the gymnasium and the park facility, as far as how we plan the building. The only difference between this building and the aquatic facility, as Jim has told me, is that there's 3,800 square feet of carpet in this upcoming new facility. You know, according to the type of foot traffic?
How much is the actual, is that?
Thirty-one hundred, no, no, it's 3,100 square feet. You know, you've been at Lake Mary's facility, there is 3,700 square feet, that's right, 3,700, so ours is just about 600 square feet small.
Our what? Our?
Our?
What exactly?
The new buildings that our vet center will be, is just.
So, 600 square feet small?
Mallard and Lake Mary's.
Lake Mary's, the big one.
Big room.
Oh, big room.
No, 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 the big room, just the big room, no, their old standard's a lot larger. Just the big room.
Right, so we get the idea, aren't building the major interior, exterior, maybe about the same?
Yeah, there's just, there's a lot of things doing, I mean, Mr. Britton brought up about, you know, one of the things that we do in here, you can kind of see is, you know, certain things that have to be scheduled, professionally cleaning the windows, professionally painting the exterior of the building, we have that, just like we do our buildings now on a five-year basis, or as needed. Of course, we do touch up and things like that when needed. But, you know, there's a lot of things that are on a as-needed basis. We do interior and exterior maintenance seven days a week, according to certain things that we do, you know, porch cleaning, pressure cleaning, that type of thing, so.
I think, let's go over to Avito Boulevard now.
All right. Avito Boulevard, one of the things I, I wanted.
Unless anybody has any questions, I need to brush along, it's also going to include.
The only thing I need one to add, that's one to add.
I need that.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add was, with, with, with the buildings and things coming on, there's always going to be continued service contracts, such as the HVAC, audio and video service provider, possibly caterers, you know, that type of thing, DJs, rentals for tables, Republic Services for their services, and then our pest control and turn-on fire and that type of thing.
You mentioned that as much as I said, we're going to develop a list of approved vendors, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Right, and somebody wants hold of the vet, there is a list of vendors, and that's like, I'm experiencing it now, going around with a band and looking at different vendors.
Why?
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 Because those, those folks are licensed and insured through the venue, and they give you a list of six or eight, if you want to use somebody else, you can, but they have to go get licensed, they have to go get insurance, they have to be in the city, it just becomes all process, it's not even worth not using one of their approved vendors, their approved vendors also know how the facility works, you know, I think.
I just wondered why you have them.
Yeah.
I think they're, I understand, I'm just.
They're all the same.
Yeah, what we plan on doing, we plan on putting something like that off the bid.
No, I just was wondering if you're limiting the same, they only can use, some places are, you know, easy for vendors, I hate not to say that.
No, no, you can, you can have the option, but the option you don't.
No, that's just like, some places are, you don't, there's only approved vendor lists and that's all.
You two are talking about the operation.
But, yeah, that's, yeah.
I was just wondering, when you said that, when you mentioned something. That Avito Boulevard, without going through.
Yeah, I would kind of, no, it's kind of.
Just don't revolve into a.
It's totally redundant, is what you said.
Just to keep it to the same level as what you just described in Avito Boulevard.
Yes.
From where to where, Mr. Cobb?
We are looking from Mitchell Halling all the way to 419.
Okay, all right, and Mr. Cobb, we've got the lay of the land, I think, so now, what questions do you want to answer? Yes?
If I can, then I'll excuse myself, but this is a lot of information, and I don't know even where to begin to baseline it, you know, so I've been looking at, as I travel around Central Park and Warner Park, that place to me looks pretty clean most of the time, most of the events I go there, I was up in Oakland Park, in Warner Garden, I know if you're familiar with that, and it's a new facility, it looked pretty nice yesterday when we were out there. Is there a way to baseline with some of these established venues and find out how, how they do that?
We've been doing that all day.
And then, then my suggestion is, it's almost getting back to a conversation we were having on the vendors, it's more philosophical, but it's kind of the opposite of what we did with, I didn't, I didn't prefer to have staff on board to perform as much of this as possible, and have vendors in place for a surge, you know, if we have an event, call in a janitor company to help out, or, or some other vendor that's a moment extra time, if we don't have the capacity for that, I think that's the type of decisions we ought to be making up here versus, I'm not sure how to quantify what, or pick up a line of sand that you're giving us here, until we get that out there and learned about a little bit better.
Well, I think what we want, you know, from council is, if you have expectations, you know, I know.
You don't mind, all right.
Yeah, not to have any footballs in there, essentially.
No more levers from Mr. Cobb, that's the standard.
And, and I know in discussion with Mr. Cobb, you know, we've, we've heard a lot of the things of what we possibly should be expecting, you know, Disney might have on a, on a lower-key budget than Disney, of course, so, you know, one thing.
You can't compare to Disney, because they have 70,000 people, they go to.
Exactly.
They've been saying that word for the past two years, it's going to be Disney, our park's going to be Disney, you can't say it for two years and keep saying those words from our vendor, from our contractor, from the guy that runs the building place for us, this is what we're building, a Disney-like park, and we've said it many times, and then when it comes to deliver, going, well, we said that, but we didn't really mean it, so we've been saying those words for the past two years, that's what we have to deliver, that, that's the expectation, we set that expectation, my.
Drew, you've got the Cadillac plan here, there's no doubt, you can see the frequency of you doing so many different things, so, just for me, I mean, when you finally bring this to us, are we going to see what it would cost to outsource this whole thing, and what it would cost to have the employees do it?
Yeah, one of the things in the whole process of what we're asking you tonight is because, for example, one of the things Mr. Cobb, I look at, if you look at CFL, and what they do for us now, for example, on Avito Boulevard and other areas, then you look at the campuses, even like if they do the mowing, the common mowings, and the gymnasium and stuff like that, the other items that routinely are done or performed by city staff on a daily basis, that that type of group is not doing, custodial services, building services, rental services, public service services, you know, street sweeping, all these different things that still go on, we wanted to make sure council's aware of all the different, different items that, you know, outsource groups don't.
So, you think this may be a hybrid too, a little outsourced, a little staff?
Well, by all means, I mean, you know, one of the things I put in is, we've got to count on certain consumer services contractors to do certain things, because we don't have staff experience to do all of them, or the licenses, and things that go along with that. So, yeah, by all means, I think we will have certain things that will definitely.
Winter, spring, my understanding is that they outsource the maintenance, and they have a manager on staff who does nothing but make sure the contractors do the job that's supposed to do, aren't reemploying them up to take you. I mean, because, you know, honestly, it is, not out of 10 times, always less expensive to outsource, if you've got somebody following the contract, and the contract is out of the contract, you know, you put a, you put a 30-day termination clause in there, or a 1-week termination clause, and how'd they go?
And we can look at those kind of things, definitely. One of the things I know from outsourcing at times is, yes, it's a lot of it's based on management and overseeing the contract. There are times, though, that the services that you get with an outsourced service compared to what you get from actual staff are different. So, what I, what I look at is, is what I call the builder's business. You sit down, you're going to get someone who can talk to the public, with outsourcing groups, you might not receive that. You're going to get someone who can be asked a question, they're not going to be able to know the answers, so people have to, especially if you're looking at someone who's working in a park and that type of thing, who's pressed. Outsourcing services, you're going to get them maybe for half a day, unless you build in that stuff to where they're there eight, 10, 12 hours. With city services, you're talking day and night services seven days a week. But in these facilities, you can be very.
I'll say here, like I've already said, it's not a matter of money, it's not. I'll say to you, like a burden, sit ups, that's not a matter of money, it's not our choices. So if your choice is to expand the staff, you've got a job, you're gonna give up expanding your staff simply as well as, if that's a choice you'll-
Well, that's, that's a discussion for us to decide, do we wanna do the hybrid or what the best, the best method is or combinations, but, you know, I agree with the Disney standard. I just don't know what it takes to maintain for the level of usage we're gonna have out there. I don't, none of us knows what the level of use is gonna be until it happens.
Yeah, but I mean, Winter Springs maintains a splash pad, maintains a whole bunch of items, so there's, there's a baseline to just look at on it.
This has been the Chris Lex, one of the things they're going away from is, we presented the splash pad, they actually staffed, ever since they moved, they've staffed.
Right, they charge non-residents use.
Yeah, it's free for, free for residents, they charge for non-residents.
Losers splash, tribal park.
They expand, they have been in the past, they're going for changes. Now, they spend thirteen thousand dollars a year on staffing and they bring in on average forty-five thousand dollars back from. So they're getting ready to go without staff, but without going without staffing, that's, you know, that, that takes away the process of just having staff there throughout the day. They still maintain the park and they do that with their staff.
Like Councilman Britton said, I mean, Winter Park certainly maintains Central Park to a high standard. Winter Garden maintains all of their parks to a high standard.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's another good example.
Yeah, well, I know, I know they probably don't maintain Cray's Roost twenty-four, seven, you know, unless they got a fence out there, which may be every weekend, but a lot of times they're going out there.
They actually, we met, David and I met with them, they actually maintain that park with their own staffing. They have event staffing as well as maintenance staffing and they do have some groups, I mean, some continuing services groups that come out to take care of certain aspects of entertainment and things like that, but they pretty much do everything else year-round. They, of course, and one of the things that they've done in the past, they have their own, they outsource mission, when they open the Cray's Roost, they outsource with a promoter that promote almost all the events annually. From the time when they opened that to now, they've tapped that over half to where they've taken over the events.
I got another suggestion for you too, Drew, that you may already do this, but it seems to me like you don't capture what they're gonna be doing, whether it's our staff or someone else's in a process, down to maybe a checklist on the back of the bathroom door on everything they need to do, it's not gonna get done. And you're gonna have to do that to a nauseating degree if you're gonna be successful.
I think we probably, Captain, what is your expectation?
My expectation, we talked about disability, we were first lines, we were a process of the Disney way. They have Disney Institute, it's a one-day course on quality, just looked it up, quality service. As exactly, we use the tools to gauge your needs, perceptions, expectations, customers and industry. So, you know, what, I mean, that's look at things like that, whether it's them or someone else, to help guide you through and find those tools and processes, et cetera, to narrow it down, but we keep saying we're at Disney up until now, and I think that's the expectation and the perception we're going down there. That's why I think all way through, Oviedo Boulevard, I include Oviedo Boulevard should be the same standard.
I agree.
Councilman Britton, I think, do you agree on that?
Yeah.
Cabinet?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor?
I agree. I think that a whole Oviedo on the park is top quality and I think we have to maintain that top quality. I don't know the best way to go about that, but I assume that you would bring, comparing apples to apples as far as outsourcing or having staffing and so they would do whatever those checklists are. But I think it'll be important for the success of Oviedo Park is to have maintained quality and top quality.
Councilwoman Britton?
You know, Drew, it goes back to what I said about, about the staff for the last couple of years, and your staff has had it, everybody's had it, you know, wearing multiple hats. I mean, you gotta remember, this is a project that the board has voted for and they're gonna expect that it always looks in pristine state, so whatever it takes to make it that way. I mean, you know, we talk about value engineering, things and everything, and I realize what you gave us here is, is a Cadillac plan. It may be some things that we could do less frequently and still need to uptake of the park, but, you know, what I'd like to see when we're ready to do this is that you give this whole proposal to a bunch of companies, let's see if they come back. I love the mayor's idea of having a czar or whatever you wanna call it, to go out there and be out there all day long. He knows where this folks are. You're not doing it, you're out. It may come into the point where, you know, it's our park, our people may take care of it a little better. We may wanna consider that too, but I think we just need to see both of them. But in the end, however we get there, whatever we do, that place has always gotta be a show place. And I think Councilman Britton just said it, I don't wanna get any more calls or emails from Mr. Miller that the garbage on Oviedo Boulevard is not being picked up. That doesn't excuse us, you know, so we just have to make sure. But I understand why that happened. Maybe somebody was overworked, the contract, he may be overworked, they may be on the same issue as we are. So whatever, whatever plan we have in place, let's make it that it, it has enough capacity, you know. I'm not on a cruise ship that holds two thousand people and they're loaded in four thousand, the staff's overwhelmed or a restaurant. Gotta make it to where people are not overwhelmed, whatever we do, so march on. But that plan would be, the park would look like a show place if we could execute that. That was a great point.
I agree, but I'd like to see all of their projects.
Yeah, sure, can I see, Councilor?
And also, I'd like to see where the goal, if council agrees, now this could start to become the halo of that over the rest of the city. You know, we start with this at extremely high level and then maybe the rest of the city goes down a notch, but it's still much higher than what we're making it now. You know, and that would include not only our facilities, but the roadway, it's the, you know, so the ride ways. And I know, you know, we have a picture of ours and counties and this and that, but, you know, in the end, residents don't realize that. They send those emails about garbage on the street. It's not only this and middle, we have them periodically from all over.
I forgot where, I was, I was at First Watch yesterday, we had breakfast, waiter come out, we were outside, and it's a cultural, we saw a bunch of napkin wrappers that blew on the ground. He started, he went, picked that stuff up. So that's kind of the culture we gotta start developing too. We all gotta pick up the trash and pick up after each other and make it look nice.
Did you want, I know you mentioned earlier, you wanted that, possibly some information, what staff and residents are doing as far as possibly breed, entertainment and different things too.
Quick update, I'm gonna call it.
Yeah, one of the things-
Hang on one second, Brian, do you have anything else? Does it need some, I'm hitting the gap.
I got it.
Anybody who's staff have anything else for us? Speak now, forever holding peace. All right, go ahead, for he's got five.
Dave and I have put together-
Oh, wait one second, Drew, can Robin and Theresa sit down now?
Of course, yes, please.
Guys, go sit down. Two bows, guys, it'll look like ready, about ready to faint.
Dave and I have put together a list of-
Good, first only.
We've been putting together a list of different things that we would like to bring to Oviedo Park as well as we've been meeting several different groups of seeing what we can also bring as far as other events and things like that. Just, you know, some of the stuff, I know the mayor had mentioned about the, like, Riddick's Center, you know, we wanna do a big Riddick's Center with a big, basically blowout of Oviedo Park, sort of, for the public and things like that, that includes a concert and different things. So we want to make-
Concert, wine here.
Very cool, thank you. The other events, of course, we do feel very strongly that we're gonna be able to bring, you know, St. Mountain there. Fourth of July is still on the air, we're checking setbacks as far as fireworks and things like that. On the site itself, fireworks won't work, but Chief White is checking on some other things that we discussed this past week and he's looking at some things. Discussion, MLK event.
Watch him run out the top of Thomas Building.
MLK event, something discussed about bringing brought, Vida Citizens Action, we're very interested in doing that. Community Health Fair, that would be up for the entire community. Relay for Life Fund, our family fund day that we had at Riverside last year, we'd like to bring there. We've had discussions with CBS Radio, which is one oh five point one, one oh five point nine, and one oh one point nine. They're very interested in working with us and bringing that center event as they bring to, like, for example, Lake Illinois Food and Wine Festival. They're very interested in bringing something out here, plus they're also interested in working with us on some other things. That would be, if they could just bring their own event out, it would be a rental type thing, just like they do with the Orlando and what they do with the Cray's Roost, where they rent that facility out and they pay for everything and then their staff is just basically out there for support purposes, that type of thing. We've also met with Radio Disney, one of the things that you, last council meeting, approved us to do our family fall festival at the mall. The whole purpose of that is bring it down because they wanna be able to bring that to Oviedo Park and wanna make it an annual event. They're also interested in doing their own event out here of a concert of some type and they wanna help us with other events on a annual basis. One of the things that we most have seen our entertainment in the past, Burchmore, Dargan Watts has worked with us for a number of years within our Fourth of July, bringing us our entertainment, things like that. We sat down with Dargan and talked about the possibility of him bringing some events and things out to, to the site.
Drew, I think, Mr. Drago, that's the promoter.
That's the promoter, that's the promoter.
That's all I can say.
We talked to a local theater or playhouse group that's very interested about possibly coming out and doing that type of thing with us. One of the things that we also wanna bring is Movies in the Park, we wanna bring that from Riverside and start that at the facility and possibly do it to where instead of only six times a year because of raining things like that, maybe this time of year we will bring, because of heat, we normally don't do it, but we're looking at maybe be able to do it maybe eight times a year over here. We wanna do something very similar to what where, or excuse me, Altman has done with his Friday Night. We wanna do a Friday Night concert, a series for a small performance stage to where every Friday night throughout the year, we'd have some type of musical type thing going on. And then, of course, we talked, you know, to groups and tastes, we talked to the Chamber, we talked to the Vito Williams Club about possibly bringing Taste of Odio and Great Aiden Country. We haven't discussed with the Otis Club about possibly bringing the Tops and Car Show, that's a possibility. So one of the things I know when we sat down, David and I, we looked at fifty-two weekends a year and we said, yeah, maybe twenty-two. Right here with these, there's twelve major events out of twenty-two right there. If everything that I mentioned, if we do that. So, we, you know, we were looking at, you know, if we end up utilizing that event center as Lake Mary is for weddings and receptions and, you know, meeting places and things like that, there's about eighteen months out, if you're ready, on Friday, Saturday and Sundays.
Will it be open on June twentieth?
Hooking now, hooking now.
Yeah, yeah, it should be.
How many do you want? We were talking to Duke about, of course, we should be lighting, lighting up the park.
We have not done that, we can do that.
That was always something to discuss with them. You know, bring something like Cray's Roost down to that area where, you know, the main roads could be all there and treat it apart.
Big one.
Yeah.
Really big.
I'm trying to take anything away from the store, so.
And then, and then we've been discussing, got a future meeting set up with Ann Hyden Bush of Sanford to discuss.
Permanent tax on the park?
Well, maybe not permanent tax.
She's not in the room right now.
So, that is, my name's-
It's like a meter, she's giving you credit cards.
Chocolate, chocolate, station drink.
You guys, you reached out to, what, Tom Jones, agent?
I knew you were gonna ask that, but it's a funny, funny thing when I was in Vegas.
He's still, he's still rocking, man. That was his seven years?
When I was in Vegas, a month and a half ago, I told my wife, I said-
Was he there?
I said, we gotta see if we can see funny Tom Jones.
He's still good, man.
Asking me if I'm gonna do that.
I said, he probably, he ain't doing much. Any other questions for Drew, did that answer?
Drew, good job, brother. You got a plan.
Anything else you need, Brian?
No, sir.
Possible?
Okay, you guys are awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.